Usually at this time, we have someone come up and do the invocation and pledge of allegiance. And we don't have anyone signed up for that this evening. So I would invite someone in the audience if they would like to deliver an invocation this evening. I'll welcome anyone up to do that. And if no one wants to come forward, I will open the floor for Ms. Katie Etheridge for that this evening.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you blessed us with. We thank you for the many blessings that you've bestowed upon this county, upon our state, and upon the nation. We ask that you will continue to bless us and be with each person that was affected by the hurricane and give them grace and mercy to get through this, you know, to try to find out what these things were asking of our nation.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And I do have one question. Ms. Karen, did you get everybody that you were looking for yet?
Um, no, sir.
Okay. We'll make a little change then. For call for approval, the general, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to defer TV 19-18 until the October 7th meeting.
Okay. And could I also get you to include in your motion to move public comment after commissioner's report?
Okay. I also move to add public comments after the commissioner's report.
Okay. Give us some more time.
I'll say it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we'll move public comment back. We have a couple of people that haven't shown up yet to give them a few more minutes to get here this evening for commissioner's report. I have a few comments. The board just did a work session, a joint work session with the Chamber of Commerce. And we're just looking at really moving forward with a better relationship with the Chamber of Commerce and having them work better and better represent the business community to the board of commissioners and vice versa. And so we had a great meeting and we're also looking at some branding stuff possibly going forward. The board hasn't taken that up yet, but we were just talking with them about that to see how they felt about that. And I think we're all in agreement that it's something we're interested in. So we'll talk more about that and get more in depth. But I just want to let people know that we just had that work session with them. For those of you that weren't there, all of our work sessions are open to the public and we do invite the public to come. So if there's, if you see something on the website that interests you, please come and see how your county government works, what we talk about, and what we do. And it'll maybe help you understand some of the decisions we reach in the future. As y'all know, we just had a hurricane come through. And I just want to take a moment, and I'm sure the rest of the board will join me in thanking the staff who came in here. This whole room was transformed into an emergency operations center. And there were people living in here for days. And just to make sure that we got through that storm okay, sending out repair crews wherever they needed to go, doing anything that needed to get done, pumping in Corolla where we have stormwater districts. All those people that were here were away from their families. So I just want to thank them for all that they do for us and the community and giving of themselves for Currituck County. I think that's it for me this evening. Mr. Payman.
Just another reminder about the hurricane. Yeah, we had a lot of good individuals up here manning it, but I also want to send out a thank you to our first responders and sheriff's department. A lot of the volunteer firefighters, they took the time away from the family to stay at stations during the hurricane to make sure that there was someone there to respond if need be. So I just wanted to thank all the departments out there for managing the stations and being stand by and helping through the storm there, pre and post. And that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, I attended the first meeting of the 2019-2020 School Year Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. One of the main goals of the council is to promote public awareness of the cause of delinquency. The council works to promote public safety, delinquency prevention, intervention, and treatment. They also provide justice services at the community and state level. The county works to strengthen families and provide effective interventions. Again, I'd like to thank the community leaders who serve on this council for their dedication and giving their time to serve the citizens of Currituck County. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beaumont.
Continuing in the post-Dorian accolades, I want to give a huge shout out to Dominion Power and all the resources that they mustered. I was on the road shortly after the hurricane and the convoys of vehicles that were headed down to Currituck County to get us back up and running was phenomenal. I know they worked some tremendous hours and, you know, just hats off to trying, doing what they did to get us back up and running as quickly as they did. And then the other one is going to be a shout out to Currituck County residents in general. It's a pleasure, it's a blessing to be part of a community where folks all get together and help each other out. And countless roads were cleared by folks that were part of the neighborhood. You know, they cut the trees, they got them out of the way to restore, you know, the ability to move around. And that's a testimony of who our county is. And just, you know, while safety is critical, the fact that folks check on each other and make sure everyone is taken care of is just a testimony to our community. So, thanks.
Thanks, sir. Mr. McCord.
Same thing, reference to hurricane. I'd also like to give a shout out to NC DOT. You know, due to the wind conditions, they can't come out at a certain time. I was on patrol that day. I was one of the supervisors on the mainland, so I can attest to all the emergency management going on in here. And we had, at the time, at the highest winds, we had to park the vehicles. We assisted the lower Currituck and Moyoc as well, and Crawford in clearing trees from the road. The citizens, we had a couple deputies that weren't on duty came out and just in their pickup trucks were helping cut up trees, like Commissioner Beaumont said. Jeff Smith, he was pulling trees out of the way with his truck. We were hooking them up to tow straps. I mean, like I said, it just shows. Then we had to do multiple follow-ups with elderly and stuff like that. It's amazing to see that people, you know, if you look on social media, all you see is negative. But if you, you know, are out there in the community, you see people really helping one another. The power company guys, they were working 16-hour shifts, well as their contractors. They looked out for some of our guys. The Dominion Power actually delivered when people couldn't get to Dare County. They delivered food to the deputies on the bridge that were standing out there for eight hours getting swerved at by people wanting to go to their beach homes. But like I said, kudos to that. There's one more thing. I can't remember what it is. But like I said, that was the main thing. Like I said, the community getting involved. The fire departments did a great job too. You know, the cop-fireman battle. But like I said, they, those guys were right there just getting it. So major kudos to them. And I'm forgetting something.
Think about it.
I'll think about it. It will come back to me. But like I said, appreciate everybody's help.
Yeah, it is. Ms. Etheridge.
You know, I'll just reiterate what everybody said. It is great to know that we got people to come to one another's aid in times of need and whatnot. I would suggest it would be nice if we did that every day, not just in times of emergency or need. I got involved with some people on social media, couldn't understand why Dominion was not out in 50 mile an hour winds and buckets up on power poles. And I said, would you do it? No. Well, why do you expect them to do it? I mean, there's a safety issue that's got to come into play. Hats off to Moyoc Fire Department because I went up there and talked to them as well as came in here on Thursday night. It was good to see everybody pulling together. And I know the Moyoc Fire Department, and I'm sure this is true with Lower Currituck and Crawford, they went door to door in communities to check on people. And hats off to them and thank them for their service as well as law enforcement and EMS.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll put one more plug in. Telecommunicators, the 911 operators. I'll get spanked.
Yeah, you'll get trouble when you go home. Mr. Jarvis.
The Trillium Northern Region Advisory Board met last Tuesday. And among the things we discussed was the Medicaid transformation postponement. The entire state will now roll out, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, but it's important to reiterate it, on February 1st, 2020. And the open enrollment for the entire state is now December 13th of 2019. Of course, all of this is contingent on the budget and more to come on that. Also, Bland Baker outlined Senate Bill 630 and told us that Trillium had begun organizing the Community Crisis Plan meetings. And the Currituck County's meeting is slated for September 18th at Albemarle Regional Hospital at 2:00 PM, if you're interested in finding out more about that. On a related note, Samantha Hurd, our Director of DSS, who's wonderful, reached out to me and let me know that Trillium had created a position called Head of DSS Engagement. And this position is designed to bridge the systems of support and bring resources in many types of settings, including our own rural setting. And hopefully, this will help build a more responsive system of care and service providers in our rural area. Mr. Baker also had a conversation with Ms. Hurd. And I'm excited to announce that with that partnership, they are now going to work on linking children's services, more children's services and providers in Currituck County. And I is willing to provide training for our DSS staff. And hopefully, we are getting ready to see more additional services added here in Currituck County. And finally, I know everybody has expressed their feelings and gratitude about Hurricane I just want to really say that if you don't know your neighbors, go meet them. It's been touching how many people reached out to me to help me personally, to help me get through not only a hurricane but a family emergency. I am so grateful to live in such a generous county with so many good Samaritans, friends, and neighbors. And I'm proud to call Currituck County my home. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was a little bit remiss. I didn't mention Corolla Fire Department. But Mr. Stackler, perhaps in the manager's report, you could talk about the value added, sir, if you didn't plan on doing that already, about what they did for us during the storm. And with that, this time I'll open public comment and have Mr. Stephen Brown signed up this evening as our first commenter. Please come up, sir, to the podium. And if you haven't spoken before, we have a three-tier system. Green is go, yellow is speed up, and red is stop. And we'll give you three minutes. And if you would, please give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. My name's Stephen Brown. I live at 118 Par 4 Drive in Grandy. Our property is adjacent to the EcoPlexus solar farm that is, you know, still under construction. Speaking of the hurricane, everybody's talking about the hurricane. You know, it's always been a concern to us with the proximity of the solar panels to our property, which is basically in our backyard. During the hurricane, we sat in our living room and looked out our bay window and watched multiple panels just flop in the wind. Now, they are still under construction, but the section that we were watching, you know, probably 300, 350 feet from our house, was loose and flopping and then eventually peeled away from the racking system. I have here the August 1st PB 1525 Currituck Sunshine Approval. And in it, Section D, Line 2, says that these panels are rated for 250 mile an hour wind speeds. And the racking system will be engineered to withstand a minimum of 120 mile an hour three-second wind gusts. Now, this was a hurricane, a category 1 hurricane, and it was not a direct hit. I believe we reached around 50 to 60 mile an hour gust in the area. And that's only half of what these things are engineered for. So it's very concerning to us, to me and my wife. I have two sons. My mother-in-law lives here close proximity to this facility. And I'm just here to, you know, express my concerns to the commissioners and hope that they would make sure that the construction, that EcoPlexus would adhere to the codes set forth by this commission. Other than that, I mean, it's just concerning. It's very close to our home. And to see these things flopping around in the wind at 50 mile an hour gust and not a direct hit, it's concerning to us. You know, we're even, yeah. So that, and the ground monitoring wells, another question or statement. You know, who monitors the ground, the water? Who tests that? Is that monitored by EcoPlexus or through the county or state? I didn't really see anything. Who gets that information and how you receive that information, whether there is a problem or not a problem?
Well, we, I don't believe that was a condition of their permit, but it was.
They had to test them and then that's on their dime to do the testing and provide the results.
Which I do know they have.
Yep.
People that do that.
They have to send it off to laboratories.
And then they provide us.
It's above board. And provide us results. And I think we adopted a drinking water standards from the state as a minimum threshold to understand basically what's in the drinking water and groundwater.
So I guess I'm just, would ask for you guys to please make sure that they do what they're supposed to be doing and that, you know, proper measures are taken to ensure our safety. Because that was part of it to, you know, that this thing would not pose a public, you know, health risk to us. And I feel like a 4x4 or 4x6 solar panel flying around in my backyard or possibly into my home, you know, is a hazard to the public safety.
And, you know, but I live right in that. I mean, I went by in Psalm 2. It's just a devastation. I couldn't believe what I was looking at. But that's one of the reasons why we originally denied it and turned it down.
And I applaud you for that. I really do.
But evidently, the core systems seemed like they needed to turn it around. So we tried to set pretty stringent standards as best we can. And, you know, yeah, I mean, I'm sure inspections are going to make sure it's done properly. I hope they hold up to the winds. I hope all of them do.
Right. And, you know, another thing, you know, they're still damaged. They're still loose. So say this storm that we, you know, fortunately went off into sea up towards Bermuda, if it had come up this way, you know, what assurance do we have?
All right, we could have had a much bigger problem.
Yeah, exactly.
The board completely understands your concerns. We have those same concerns and we'll be working with them. And I'm sure they'll want to understand why they failed and be working with their engineers as well, because it's going to be quite costly to them to have this damage and now fix this.
Right.
So I'm sure we'll be working through that as we go forward. I know we will, as a matter of fact. So thank you for bringing that up this evening. We appreciate it. And we are looking into it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Karen Caldwell. I got you next, Mike.
If we might, the person who's going to do her main presenting is stuck because of two traffic accidents on the 168, or one on 64 getting to 168. He is now on 160, about 20 minutes away. To give you a consistent, when everybody talks and together, we'd like you to drop it down if possible. If not, we will try to give the information we can, but it may be a little disjointed.
Okay. So have you, is Bob Stanley one of the?
Yes, he's the person we're waiting on.
Okay.
He's the main presenter.
Scott Alley is?
He is here also. But again, if Bob Stanley were able to give first, the rest would make more sense and be more consistent.
Okay. I just want to make sure you guys are all together.
And all four of us here.
I'm going to amend the agenda to move the public comment down. So move. Where would you like that to land, sir?
How much time does he think he needs to get here?
He thinks he's about 20 minutes away.
How about to, prior to the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's just move to the end and be safe.
Okay. Thank you. Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right. Thank you. Well, that moves us on to the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple updates on Hurricane Dorian. Obviously, like everybody said here, it was a tremendous effort by staff, by volunteer firemen, by Dominion Power and all the other folks who put in a lot of man-hours to make sure that the recovery from the storm happened quickly. Just to give folks kind of a frame of reference, most major roads in the county were blocked at some point during the storm. Volunteer firemen and citizens went out and took care of all those trees. At the height of the power outage, you have roughly 18,000 customers in Currituck County. There was a period in time when 15,000 of those customers were without power. And in a matter of roughly 36 hours, they got just about all of them back home. So it really is amazing work that was done by Dominion. I've had a lot of questions about debris pickup. The county has on the agenda tonight a notice to proceed for debris pickup. We're going to bring that to you guys for approval. After that happens, we're going to have a meeting with the contractor. They'll set a date for debris pickup. It's very important that folks understand it's for woody debris. If you haven't got it out to the right of way yet and you're on a state-maintained road, get it out to the right of way before the date when it comes out. Try to get it cut up into lengths of six feet or less. And do not bag any debris. It all needs to be loose. So it's really important that folks hear that. The more passes we have to make, the more costly it is. So if we can do the whole county in one pass, that's great. What typically happens is people see the trucks go by and then they drag their stuff out to the right of way. So we're trying to give plenty of notice between now and when we set the debris pickup date so that folks know that it's coming. So I'd encourage the board and any folks who are watching or any of the other community members out there, as we come out with that date, let people know the process so that we can make sure we can get as much picked up in the first pass as possible. We're going to have an after-action report on Thursday. That's where the folks who are involved with the EOC, along with some of the representatives from public safety departments, get together and talk about things that could be done better, things that went good. Obviously, through any of these events, no two are the same. There's always room for improvement. Overall, I was really impressed with the staff. This being the first hurricane that I've been through as the manager in any community, you've got to, you should be really proud of the people that you have here and the knowledge that they have. They did a really tremendous job, I feel. The pumping that the chairman was alluding to, we pumped in areas that have a service district in the Wellhead Community and in the Ocean Sands and Crown Point Communities. In the past, there was a lot of cost associated with that, basically because of the man-hours it took. We had to pay the pumping company to have folks here to set up the pumps, to move the pumps, to take the pumps down. It also made it hard for us to pre-position pumps because the staff would have to come in and put the pumps up, and then time would pass, and then they'd have to come back if there was a disaster. We were able to use the fire department staff to do that, mostly paid staff, but some of the volunteer firemen in Corolla as well. And the cost savings of that is over $100,000. And so it's pretty impactful to see, you know, that's the benefit of having that, those paid fire staff there, the manpower that they were able to bring to bear on that pumping operation really paid dividends. It also helped us move pumps around very quickly whenever we isolated areas that needed it and were within a service district. The other update I wanted to give was in regards to a meeting that I attended with the chairman for the school board last week. We, the school board has officially voted in numbers for capacity for the schools. And list is going to be sent out to the board for all the schools, but the one that is the most critical, obviously, right now is Moyoc Elementary School. They set a capacity of 560 students at that school. The most recent attendance number that we had is 598.
601 as of today.
601 as of today. So, I mean, we're well over capacity according to the school board for the Moyoc Elementary School. And so that has an impact on rezonings and use permits that come before this board for residential units in the Moyoc Elementary School District. As we talked about in the past, that makes it difficult for you all to approve those types of applications that come before you unless we are within two years of a school opening. And from the time that we start to design a school, it's two and a half years, and we have not started design yet. So to give you kind of a point of reference, that's the timeframe that we're looking at. And to comment on the concerns about the solar farm in Grandy, we've had our inspections crew go out and make contact with EcoPlexus. We have requested that they provide us with an engineer report on why the panels failed. And if the design is not adequate, we have asked them to provide us with a design that is adequate and show the modeling that proves that. And we are also going to require them to retrofit any panels that have the old brackets if they have to do some kind of new design in order to meet the wind standard. So that's the process that we're using to ensure compliance with the conditions that were placed on that solar farm. We have also been in contact with Waste Management, who handles all of the disposal, of waste disposal in our county, and informed them that solar panels are not allowed in landfills or convenient sites. They have to be disposed of at the proper facility. So that should keep those from being transferred to the landfill that we use in Bertie County as well. Finally, I wanted to address an issue that occurred this weekend with the lane closures that caused a traffic jam on the highway. We received word from...
They did vehicle painting too on the side, though.
We did get, yes, sir. I think a commissioner got a free paint job on a vehicle.
Good thing it cost weight.
The problem, according to NC DOT, and this is the information that we received from Division 1 Office, is that on Friday, they did work on the roads and the work, the glue between the layers of asphalt had not had a proper time to cure. And so if they had opened the lane for travel, then the asphalt would have failed. And so it was a safety concern. I don't pave roads for a living, don't know anything about it. I work for a county in North Carolina, and as a county manager, we don't do roads. So that's kind of a common thing across the entire state. But that's the word that came from Division 1 today. We did reach out to them as soon as it was brought to our attention and tried to get them to move the cones. They were in contact with the communications center and with the sheriff's office is what they, was what they communicated to us. But that's the reasoning that they had for leaving the lanes closed on a Saturday with traffic that way.
And I just wanted to clarify that in the ARPO meetings, that was explicitly identified that we would not have lane closures on the weekend.
I believe that myself and Commissioner Beaumont both raised that concern. So we...
So leaving cones up because the glue hasn't dried?
Yeah. Yeah.
When it was like 90 degrees and it was humid.
Like I said, I don't know the first thing about paving roads.
I don't either, but, you know, if you needed an extra day for the glue to dry, maybe they should have stopped on Thursday. Just, but I'm a simple guy.
It was best and it shouldn't happen again.
I'm not going to sit here and tell you it won't. I'll tell you it shouldn't. And the other thing for citizens to understand, the county has zero control over that. I mean, that is an NC DOT decision. There's no county staff, there's no county elected official.
They don't even talk to us.
I mean, DOT is hired through the executive branch of the state, and they communicate with us. Our local maintenance guys do a really good job. The division communicates pretty well with us, but we, I can't make a guarantee on their behalf, but we have definitely communicated to them numerous times that it's not acceptable to shut down one of the lanes, especially on a Saturday, Sunday during the busy time of year for this highway. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have this evening.
Okay. Thank you. And well, one point of discussion with the school board, when they talk about being at capacity, the school board has, is very well aware of this. They are having discussions now about bringing in some trailers to alleviate some of the pressures. And the numbers we're talking about are a little bit forward-looking, too. So there are some compression that happens with K-33 class sizes. So don't panic that your kids are going to the school and they're hanging out of the windows because they're just shoehorned in there. It's not quite the case. But the school board and the Currituck County Board of Commissioners are very well aware of what's going on and working forward and moving forward with a new school for that area. So just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
Mr. Chairman, would it be safe to say that the capacity issue has been helped be created by the General Assembly lowering the number of kids that can be in the classroom?
I think it is definitely, it's definitely caused it to come on quicker, for sure. The number 560 is derived because the original number, and then they had an original number of 583, and they whittled it down based on the classroom size reduction, which is a state statute. So 560 is what you have to meet to be in compliance with the law next year. And then the year after that, it actually will go down further to probably 529.
Yeah. I understand that in Wake County, that reduction could cause them to have to build 10 new elementary schools immediately. 10.
Yeah. Yes, sir. I believe that's correct. I've heard the same number. I've heard the same number.
Thank you.
Well, the good news is the House passed the budget. Hopefully, the Senate will, and we'll get $11 million, thanks to Representative Hennig, to go towards a new school. All right. Next up, we have administrative report. Item A, 2020 Census Presentation. Derek DeRozio, did I get that right?
Sir.
Okay. Partnership Specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. And it's my pleasure to be here, speaking to the board and to the people of Kurutuck County, especially this time you recover from the hurricane. I was reminded of the impacts of the hurricane today. I was visiting Ms. Laura at the library out in Barco, and I came out of the meeting and a branch fell on my car. No damage. Just a reminder to lingering impact of the hurricane. But anyway, my name is Derek DeRozio, Partnership Specialist, U.S. Census Bureau. I'm a veteran, former Coast Guard officer. So I was stationed right here in East City for a time, as well as Lumington, Atlantic Beach, so I'm very familiar with the area. It's my honor to be associated with the Census this year. And the message I'm here to present, if I can get my clicker working, is basically that I'm asking you to engage, educate, and encourage the people that you know, the people you love, your neighbors, your friends, your community, your constituents, with respect to the 2020 Census. We're going to do this word of mouth from trusted voice, because they're going to leave a lot more from you than from me. So I'm asking you to do that, and I'm asking everybody in the audience to do that. I want you to hear what I have to talk about. And the message we're going to convey is simple. It's three simple points in any order. That is that the Census is important, it's easy, and it's safe. I'm going to talk about how each of those things are true here in a minute. So before we do that, can I show the video, or is that not possible? I have a one-minute video from recording artist John Cicada, and he says a lot more eloquently than I can. If we can show the video, if not, no big deal.
We'll find out. We've got some new TVs.
All right. And while we're waiting for that, y'all have packets in front of you with the information. I appreciate LeAnn setting it up for us. And I'll have some census swag over there. You guys can share when you're done. And for the public, I've got information here on the table. And first come, first served for the census swag. And that's when you're going to get the first break on the table, all free charge. So one-minute video.
Hi, I'm John Cicada. I am very proud of all my musical and humanitarian collaborations over the years. And today, I am proud to be collaborating with the U.S. Census Bureau to help ensure a complete and accurate count for the 2020 Census. The 2020 Census is easy, safe, and important. When you respond to the Census, you help identify where new hospitals, schools, and roads are built, where new businesses might open, even how many congressional seats your district gets. You're helping to shape your community's future and its funding. So when it's time to respond to the Census, remember that your community needs your help. It's essential that everyone is counted, including young children. Your responses are safe and confidential. To learn more, visit 2020census.gov.
All right. So thank you, Mr. Cicada. And we're going to talk about how the Census is important, easy, and safe. But before we do that, a little background on the Census. All right, so the goal of the 2020 Census is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. What we're really talking about here is getting 100% of the county counted for the Census. There are some estimates, not census estimates, but other studies, that will suggest that the cost of missing even one person in the Census is about $2,000 in federal funding a year in North Carolina, and that money trickles down to the county and local communities. So we may not have the largest population in this county, but we would count every single person. But we want to get them to self-respond to the Census, all right? So everybody's going to get a postcard or a questionnaire in the mail or delivered to their house in early March, and they're going to get five reminders to self-respond to the Census. We're asking them to do that before the fifth reminder. After that, we'll come knock on your door. So self-response is the most cost-effective, efficient, and quite frankly reliable and accurate way to respond to the Census. So that's really our goal. Along those lines, the self-response rate for the 2010 Census, if you're here in Kurutuck County, was among the highest in the entire state. 80% of the folks in this county self-respond to the Census, which is incredible. But the governor set a goal of 82% for every county in 2020. We want to go and increase that self-response rate even more. But y'all, of all the counties out there, you want to hire. So I applaud you on that. And you've got a sheet in your folders there that shows the self-response rates for the 2000 and 2010 censuses in there. It's on the, I think it's on the left side of your folder there. And then if you look, take a look at Derrick County there, by the way. Derrick County, back in 2000, had a very low response rate, in the 30%. They did not have a viable Complete Count Committee in 2000. They got a viable Complete Count Committee in 2010, and their self-response rate went up over 40%. Attributed largely to the impact of the Complete Count Committee. So one of the things I'm going to ask y'all to do tonight is take a look at a resolution or proclamation and adopt it to formally start a Complete Count Committee in partnership with the Census Bureau for the 2020 Census. Look at Derrick County for the impact of the new Complete Count Committee. Okay, a little more background. So the Census is actually in the Constitution. It's required by Article I, Section 2 of the Constitution, decennial census every 10 years. So the first census takers were the U.S. Marshals, those folks in the black and white photo up there. But back in 1790, we counted 3.9 million people in this country. Today, we count all the states and our legal territories, and we expect there are over 330 million people that we have to count in the 2020 decennial census. And we can't do that alone. That's why we need your help. The way the Census divides this data, it's kind of divided by country, state, county, city, census tract, which are little swatches of land that we count. Then there's individual blocks that make up the tracts, and then addresses or homes that make up the blocks. So in the country today, 330 million people, there's over 140 million individual housing units across 11.1 million census blocks in the USA that we have to count, some butcher in this county. That's why we ask for your help. But to understand the decennial census, you've got to understand that this is not something that we just do every 10 years. We are doing census surveys every month of every year. The decennial census happens every 10 years, is the biggest one. We've got to count everybody that's in the country as of April 1st, 2020, regardless of legal status. If they're here, we have to count them April 1st, 2020. But the other surveys that we do, there's about 100 of them that we're conducting, they're sent out to small, randomly selected segments of the population. And then we extrapolate the data and make connections from there to give you more statistical information. But these other surveys that are conducted, there are long-form surveys. If you look at the American Community Survey, which is the most popular, that's about one in every 40 households that get an ACS survey. If you Google that, the questionnaire is about 15 pages long. Okay, so a small segment of the population get this really long questionnaire. Contrast that with the decennial census. It's 10 questions, 10 minutes, but everybody has to do it. So that's the difference in the surveys. So you can see the wide variety of information we collect between these other surveys, such as the ACS and the decennial census. Very detailed information, nothing personal. It's all collected just for statistical information, and we provide that to community leaders, to the government, to the public, to businesses, to engage in smarter database decision-making. And if you look in your folders, there's a sheet called 50 Ways Census Data Is Used, and you can see also all the different ways that we use that data, or some of the ways we use that data. Okay, so I said the Census is important, easy, and safe. So how is the Census important? Two reasons: political power and money. Not rocket science. The more people you have, the more money you get, and the more political power you have. So as far as political representation goes, two things: apportionment. So we've got 435 seats in the House of Representatives, split among all the states today. That number doesn't change. The states compete for those seats in the House of Representatives. And we're lucky because we're seeing a migration of population generally from northern states to southern states. So we think, if we count everybody we think we have in this state for the 2020 decennial census, we think we're going to pick up one, maybe two, seats in the House of Representatives. So we have 13 right now. We could pick up 14 or even 15 seats, which is a huge boon to our federal power as a state. Which is why the governor is so involved in this as well. So that's apportionment. Beyond apportionment, we do what we call redistricting. The Census does not do redistricting, but we provide the data to the state to do redistricting. So all your political, legislative, jurisdictional boundaries, including voting precincts, are drawn from data provided to the state by the Census Bureau. So that's another important reason that we have this data. But the money, this is what really resonates with the public, is the money. $675 billion a year in federal funding. This is first based on decennial census data. If you do the calculations over the next decade, that's about $4 trillion in federal funding. I'm going to make sure you get your piece of the pie. Every single person gets counted, and you get your money for every person in this county. Again, census data is used in many ways. You've got the sheet in there. We talked about the hurricane, emergency response. If you talk to the emergency response managers, a good foundation of any emergency management plan is understanding how many people you have and where they live. You need that to be able to access the services and do your plan correctly. Census data provides that. But it's used in all these other reasons as well. Additionally, businesses use this data. And I was, as a joke, I was in Martin County the other day, and they were saying they wanted a cheesecake factory in Martin County. They're not going to get a cheesecake factory, but businesses look at this data to see what the demographics are, if they're going to open up and expand into these areas. So it's also used not just by governments, but by businesses as well to create new jobs and create new businesses where the demographics suggest it. Okay, Census is easy. Again, we've got some new initiatives this year. For the first time ever, okay, in history since 1790, you can do your census on your phone. Internet, mobile device, whatever platform you choose, you can do it. So you have to have either a cellphone or an internet connection to do it. So online is the easiest way to respond, to 10 questions, 10 minutes, all right? We hope most people will take advantage of that, but if not, we are still offering the old-fashioned paper questionnaires. And also, we'll be phone support as well. We'll be translating in 13 or 14 different languages. You can call, and the Census will be taking over the phone, translating your language of choice. Those are the ways we're taking the census. We're trying to do away with paper and go to more electronic transmission of data. So the Census is very easy. Here's, I've got a more expanded timeline in your folders, but this is the general timeline here. So around the middle of March, every postcard that, every address that has a mailbox, we'll get a postcard in the mail with a barcode, all right? It's not addressed to a person, it's addressed to a address and a household. And that household takes that postcard, punches in the barcode, does the census for that household. So if you have four people, you do it for four people in your household. That's the way most of it will work. If you not have a mailbox, if you're a rural or a post office box, a census worker will drop off a paper questionnaire and a letter at your house, all right? If you follow this timeline through March through the end of April, you'll have no less than five opportunities, five reminders, to self-response to the Census, okay? Whether that is via internet, via phone, or paper, your choice. You've got five reminders to do that, okay? At the end of April, after that fifth time we remind you to self-respond, they're going to come knock on people's doors. We don't want to do that, but that's what's going to have to happen, because we want to count everybody in the county. So that's the general timeline. Following this timeline a little more, what's going to happen is after the, come about June through about August, it'll be the non-response fault for people knocking on doors. After that, you're going to see some quality control going on, where they're still going to knock on some doors and just check on some of the addresses that they took data from, and that'll go on through the end of the year. Then the final counts are delivered to the president, they're required to be delivered to the president, no later than December 31st, 2020. So the president gets the information then, and then we provide the information to the states no later than April 1st, 2021, for redistricting. That's extending the timeline a little further. So Census is important, it's easy, and it's safe. And there's a handout in there as well that talks about the confidentiality and privacy. And this can be our biggest challenge sometimes, especially in today's political climate. Some folks don't want to believe that they can trust the government, you know, or that the census information will not be shared with anybody else. But by law, Title 13 U.S. Code requires the Census not to share information with anybody else outside the Census Bureau. It's only collected for statistical purposes only, okay? Your personal information cannot be disclosed to anybody. If we disclose it, we go to jail, and we face a large fine, and we take an oath to protect that information. So we cannot share your information. I want to get this out on the record. We will not and cannot legally share information with immigration, with DHS, with ICE, with police, with the IRS, not with your landlord, not with your bill collectors, nobody. Beyond that, the Supreme Court has ruled that census information is not releasable pursuant to Freedom of Information Act requests, it's not discoverable in legal proceedings, it cannot be subpoenaed by any court of law. Beyond that, DOJ has ruled that the Patriot Act, okay, does not even allow the release of census information. So even if they think you're a terrorist, and they come to the Census Bureau, say, "Give me this guy's information," we cannot release it. That is how protected your information is under the law today. That's the message we've got to give to people, because some people don't believe that, but that's the law. There is something called a 72-year rule. I want to address that. Back in the day, this was determined to be the average lifespan of a person. So after 72 years, some information can be released to the National Archives and Records Administration. That's for genealogical and family research purposes. So for example, your grandparents or great-grandparents, back in 1941 when they did the census, that information was released in 2012. So 72 years will be released for genealogical purposes. And that's released through National Archives and Records Administration, not through the Census Bureau. Very important to note, okay, that the Census never asks for your full social security number, never asks for money or a donation, never, we don't affiliate with any political party, we are apolitical. We never request PIN codes, credit card information, passwords, any of that. If somebody's out there doing it, it's not the Census. And we coordinate with law enforcement, with all our operations, make sure they know that we're collecting the information, but we don't collect this information. So if somebody's doing it, they're a scammer. That's to be dealt with accordingly. Okay. So having said that, the Census is important, easy, and safe, okay? We want everybody to respond, 100% response rate. Traditionally, based on our previous response rates from other censuses, these are the hard-to-count populations that have not self-respond to the Census in the past. These are about 11 or so groups, particularly troubling children five years old and under, okay? In the 2010 census, it's estimated that over 1 million children under the age of five were not counted in the census. And those kids live with that mistake for the next 10 years to be corrected in 2020. So those communities that have those kids, that's not North Carolina, that's across the whole state, across the whole country, excuse me. But where those communities, where those kids live, where there's private funding for those kids and have to live with that for the next 10 years, we then count them. Why they don't get counted? Hard to say, okay? We think some of it has to do with kind of deterioration of traditional household, where kids might be spending time among different households and nobody kind of counts them, but we're not sure what the exact reasons are. But we need to get that message out particularly to the kids, to the families with kids, that they need to be counted. These other groups, you know, veterans, people with disabilities, a single person might fall into multiple groups. You might have a veteran who's homeless, who's disabled, who's living in a rural area, but we want to count all these areas. So these are our target populations. And how do we deal with this? We create a Complete Count Committee, which that's on your agenda to hopefully adopt the resolution and create the Complete Count Committee for this county here tonight. So the Complete Count Committee essentially markets the Census. You promote the 2020 Census in your community through trusted voices in the community, and you reach out particularly to those hard-to-count populations. So you'll come up with subcommittees or members of your Complete Committee that can leverage and reach each of those communities and get the word out, so people can self-respond to the Census. That's the gist of a Complete Count Committee. You'd be called a local government Complete Count Committee, and this is just a list of some of the subcommittees or members that you would have on it. And I gave LeAnn a Complete Count Committee training manual, which I'll go over with her later. So if y'all decide to be your chair of the Complete Count Committee, I will go over that manual in detail, and I'll get them set up with how to actually run a Complete Count Committee. Here's some tools we have available. We have a lot of free tools available. If you just Google Census Partners, you'll see all the tools that we have available. Google census partners, you'll see all the tools that we have available. And this is something called Rome. This is a response outreach mapper, response outreach mapping application. It's a heat map. So what you can do is you can click on North Carolina. You can click on Currituck County. You can drill down to the individual tracks that compose Currituck County. You see all the demographic information of Currituck County. And you could see what the predicted low response score is for each of those census tracks. It's a dynamic score that's updated. So if we think there's a score that's higher, which means that we think less people respond from that, those are the areas that you want to focus on and address. That'll show up darker on the heat map. So if you have a score of about 25% or more, that's troubling. You've got to address those areas. And less than 25% is kind of normal. That map is updated in real time. And there's many other tools available on the partner's webpage to help you with your complete count committee. Okay, so how can you help? You know, we talked about complete count committee. Obviously we need that. If y'all decide to allocate some funding for census public education outreach, that will help you in the long run. I was just in Nash County about a month ago. They allocated a little bit of funding and they came up with some really nice graphics that they kind of merged census graphics and Nash County graphics into a thing called Nash Counts. And that's their tagline. They created some nice documents and brochures from that. Use something like that if you want. But certainly raise awareness. You know, whenever you talk, whenever you, any government buildings, you know, bills, internet, whatever, any way you can post the message of the census, get it out there to your communities, printing material and digital material. And hopefully we issue a proclamation here tonight announcing the CCC and suddenly start the public education campaign. And we have jobs available. There's information about the job. We hire people in every community because we need to take the census everywhere. And that's the information about the jobs. You also have a recruiting card in your packets along with my card. It's in the front part of the There's my contact information. I cover the whole Albemarle region. I think I have more counties than even now. So I'm here through 2020, and I'm your point of contact for anything you need for the census. And that is all I have pending any questions.
Questions on the board? Thanks, sir. The resolution that you're talking about, I have in front of me is, I can read this into the record if there's interest in the board in adopting the resolution this evening.
Go ahead and read it.
Okay. It's in the packet?
Yeah.
Okay, it is in the packet. Well, I'll go ahead and read it for the, for the record though. Resolution of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners to support the 2020 United States Decennial Census. Whereas the U.S. Census Bureau is required by the U.S. Constitution to conduct a complete count of the population provides us historic opportunity to help shape the foundation of our society and play an active role in American democracy. And whereas Currituck County is committed to ensuring every resident is counted. And whereas federal and state funding is allocated to communities and decisions are made on matters of national and local importance, importance based in part on census data and housing. And whereas census data to help determine how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives and are necessary for their accuracy and fair redistricting of state legislative seats, county and city councils, and voting districts. And whereas information from the 2020 Census and American Community Survey is vital for economic development and increased development. And whereas the information collected by the census is confidential and protected by law. And whereas the united, united voice from business, government, and community-based and faith-based organizations, educators, media, and others will enable the 2020 census message to reach more of our residents. And whereas the census count requires extensive work and the Census Bureau requires partners at the state and local level to ensure a complete and accurate count. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Currituck, that Currituck County is committed to achieving a complete and accurate census and will support the goals for the 2020 census by partnering with the U.S. Census Bureau and the state of North Carolina by addressing the importance of the 2020 census to our local community and by encouraging citizen participation, education, and engagement.
Move to set the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing not carried unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Ms. Leanne, were we giving this to him this evening? Or no? Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, public hearings. Item A, PB 90-07 Pine Island Phase 5B, amended sketch plan use permit, request to modify the approved plan unit development at Audubon Drive in Ocean Trail Corolla. Tax map 128, parcels 2H and 2L in the Poplar Branch Township. I have got too much going on this evening. Ms. LaCisro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a use permit which is a quasi judicial sitting of the boards. We will need to have sworn in.
Okay. Do we have applicant or the representative here? Anyone who would like to speak to this matter must be sworn in this evening. If you could please come up. Left hand on the Bible. Right one in there. Thank you. Do you all solemnly swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you. All right. Now on Ms. LaCisro when she returns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an amended sketch plan use permit for the Pine Island Plan Unit Development. In the 1990s, this planned unit development, a PUD is what we call it, was approved. And right, this is an aerial of, of the property that is in question tonight. It is both what they're referred to as 5B and the airstrip property. It is zoned, single-family outer banks, SFO, but it does have a PUD, Planned Unit Development overlay for the zoning. It is in the Corolla full service area by the 2006 land use plan. So originally, Phase 5 was a commercial allocation for the plan, for the Pine Island PUD. And this is an area that was eventually, right here was where the Hampton Inn is currently located. But 5B is proposed, 5B was 60 villas with the retail. Now the applicant is requesting that the, 60 proposed villas now be converted to 23 single-family residential dwellings, or 23 lots.
Can I stop you there for just a second, Ms. LaCisro? Did you say there was 60 and commercial, or was this in a commercial zoning?
It was, this was a commercial designation within the PUD for 60 villas and retail in this area.
And retail, okay.
So that, this is what the applicant is now presenting, Turnpike Properties is now presenting, sorry, now requesting amendment for 23 single-family, single-family lots on this, in the PUD. With this conversion, they will also be, originally they were, I'm sorry, originally they were approved for 340 dwelling units. This will reduce that to 303 dwelling units. So it's going to reduce some density. So they're going to have 0.87 units per acre for the overall density of the planned unit development. And if this is approved today, it will reduce the commercial allocation, reduces the reduction of nearly 17 acres of commercial because it'll be converting it to single-family, single, uh, single-family lots. It is served with Southern Outer Banks water and Pine Island, Currituck LLC serves wastewater for this area. And the technical review committee does recommend approving of this because it is a reduction in density. Instead of the 60 villas, we are now, they are now proposing 23 single-family lots. And typically with the use permit, staff is responsible for, the four findings that the board would have to make, and staff is responsible for two of them typically, that the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans. Staff does find that this is in conformity with the 2006 land use plan, is, classifies this site as full service within the Corolla sub-area. Residential development in full service areas should have a base density of two units per acre, but could be increased to three to four units per acre through overlay zoning depending upon services available and the potential impact on the surrounding area. An overall density of no more than three units per acre should be applied to the PUDs in the Corolla sub-area. The proposed use is consistent with the policies of the plan, including Policy HN1, Currituck County shall encourage development to occur at densities appropriate for the location. Location and density factors shall include whether the development is within an environmentally suitable area, the type and capacity of sewage treatment available to the site, the adequacy of transportation facilities providing access to the site, and the proximity of the site to existing and planned urban services. Policy HN3, Currituck County shall especially encourage two forms of residential development, each with the objective of avoiding traditional suburban sprawl. One is open space developments that cluster homes in, on less land, preserving permanently dedicated open space and often employ onsite or community sewage treatment plant. And two, compact mixed-use developments or developments near a mixture of uses that promote a return to balanced self-supporting community centers generally served by centralized water and sewer. The second use permit standard that staff is typically responsible for is that the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including but not limited to schools, fire and rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities. Applicable state standards and guidelines shall be followed for determining when public facilities are adequate. Since this is in the Corolla sub-area on the 2006 land use plan, the proposed use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. Utility services are provided for the site, wastewater and water capacity are available, and onsite stormwater management is proposed to address additional runoff. At this time, I would take any questions that the board may have.
Any questions for Ms. LaCisro from the board? Okay. Then I will invite the applicant up at this time, or their presenter, to talk to us about the project. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Michael Strater. I'm an engineer with Quibb and Associates, the civil engineer of record for the applications submitted before you this evening. We also have Rolf Blizzard representing Turnpike Properties with us as well. Turnpike Properties is the applicant for the, for the project. Ms. LaCisro provided a very good staff report of the, where the project is now. We've obviously worked very diligently with county staff and the community to develop and then refine, continue to refine this project to a point where it could be submitted and reviewed by As you saw, the subject parcel is currently approved for 63 bedroom villas in addition to a commercial retail development. The applicant, after much thought and consideration, proposes to actually decrease the overall density, slightly increase the open space, to make the project, projected development be in more in harmony with the surrounding neighborhoods of the Pine Island PUD. And also, as Ms. LaCisro stated, the project, the application is in complete compliance with the UDO. Specifically, the amended sketch plan of the PUD is in compliance with the Balkan dimensional standards as defined in the transitional provisions of the UDO, and also in compliance with the land use plan. If it's the board's pleasure to approve the amended sketch plan and use permit application submitted before you this evening, we'll obviously proceed with site design, permitting, preliminary plat, and ultimately construction drawings. We mainly just want to make sure that you're aware that we're here, we're available. We want to, we'd appreciate the opportunity to try to address any questions or concerns that the board may have.
I have, reading through the packet material, it looked like it's your public meeting. You had, where are you going to put accesses for the, the western lot? So there was only one access on the south or north end of it?
There will be two accesses that serve this development. The one that you can see shaded is actually mainly, each one of those oceanfront properties has the ability to have access. But there'll be an amenity to that northeast portion of the, of the project. But there's also a pedestrian easement along the southern portion. That way, for those non-oceanfront lots, if you're on the south of that main entrance, you would likely use the southern oceanfront access. If you're on the north, you would likely utilize the northern access.
Okay. And I believe, is one of them going to be like just a sand trace, or is there, is there any thought toward improving those, towards raised walkway over the dune on, on either end? Or do you know the answer to that question at this time?
Are you referring to there being an existing walkway?
The easements that are in there for the non-oceanfront lot.
Okay.
You know, so that they can go to the beach easier is what I'm getting at. It seems, you know, if you're, if you're the guy in the middle, you've got to go one way or the other, and you're dragging all your stuff over the beach. It's certainly easier to do on a wooden walkway or some improved surface to get over to the beach.
Yes. There will be an improved surface on both of those accessways.
Another question I believe they had was something about the greenway or sidewalk. And I couldn't, it looked like on there that, are you proposing to widen the existing sidewalk that's kind of buried back behind the olives now?
The existing.
It's sort of 10 foot something or another.
No, we're not proposing to widen the existing. In fact, obviously, we'll, we'll get more into details once we're in the site plan design. The idea would be to maintain the walkway along NC 12. And then in addition, we're going to be proposing a walkway along the eastern side of the new roadway.
Eastern side, okay.
And.
To what, to, to Vince's, do we?
So through the neighborhood? You're, you're talking about the road that goes to the neighborhood, through the subdivision?
Correct.
You would have a walkway inside the neighborhood between the oceanfront and the non-oceanfront front lots?
Correct. Correct. And that will basically run from the cul-de-sac, the southern access along the eastern side, running northward all the way up to, towards the Hampton Inn.
Okay. All right. So that diverts and comes out and goes around the Hampton Inn parking lot there?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I know this board has entertained multiple times, had to field questions as to public multi-use paths, et cetera, et cetera. I know that on multiple occasions, we've tried to tie Pine Island into the rest of Corolla, and that's kind of met with, you know, some degree of resistance, notably the amount of trees and/or shrubs that have to be removed as, as the right of way. And the, you know, we've heard the comment, we have our own sidewalks. I won't go into the
Right.
brutal language that was used, but is it reasonable to have or to require that walkways be put in? You know, we're doing it in other areas of the county. And, you know, Pine Island is part of Currituck County.
That's why I brought that up. It shows on their plat here for Lot 4R, 10-foot wide bike jogging and golf cart path paved. And the existing path, I believe, is a concrete four-foot wide.
About 10-foot.
Yes, it's not 10-foot. That's why I brought that up to you is it's, it's, it's in the package you submitted to us that there will be a 10-foot wide bike jogging and golf cart path. And so I just want to get a little clarity on what that was. I know when you come out in front of Pine Island Reserve, it's probably five feet wide through there. And, and as you said, we've, we've been trying for years to get better walking paths for the public at large to move around, which have been highly successful in ocean sands and up through Corolla and to Corolla.
Yeah.
And beyond.
We're not, to answer your question, we're not proposing, I'm not sure where that note is yet, so I'm going to go search for that. But, um, we're not proposing to increase that existing walkway, but we did want, we also want, shared the desire to provide the pedestrian and bicycle friendly area. One of the topics that was heard during our community meetings was an apprehension from the surrounding residents from the island.
Right. They want to lose their Russian olives to
Well, and
in their vegetative buffer.
It doesn't sound like they wanted interconnectivity between
Right.
phases, cul-de-sacs. So that was actually one thing where we're, we're proposing to make, to keep a southern buffer, vegetative buffer.
So the bike path will just terminate at Phase 6, I guess, which is the existing?
I'm talking about 10-foot wide in the picture right there.
Yeah, that's right, under Phase 6, existing.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm Rolf Blizzard with Turnpike Properties. Could we put up the other graphic that kind of shows the, I guess, the more definitive site plan? I think it might be in your package.
It's, it's in your packet?
Well, I'm looking at number 19, and it shows the draw, where it says 10-foot wide jogging and golf cart path paved.
And that may be, it's, it's showing on, I guess, Phase 6 actually, but it's, it's annotated in here. So that's, that's why, that's why it's causing a little bit of consternation on my part. And, um...
If I could draw your attention to the exhibit, I think it's March Sketch, 23 single-family, 23 SFD lot, Lot 4R. And it's got a 1 in the corner. You guys have that exhibit key?
Mm-hmm. It's page 19.
Yeah, that's the same one.
Same page.
10-foot wide, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the walkway along Highway 12 is there currently.
Right.
That was put in by Turnpike Properties back when the community was originally developed and was part of the developers.
Right.
Original development. There's no proposal to change any of that.
So it is 10-foot wide or?
No.
It's like my thoughts.
Well, it could be an easement. I'm, I'm, that's, I'm just, it was, I was just looking for a little clarification. If you look down right where it says Lot 168, Lot 167.
Negative verb, verb adjunctive.
It, it's right there that it's going to be a 10-foot wide jogging and golf cart path paved. And I'm well aware of the existing path.
I'm trying to find where you.
It's on page, the, I think you're on the right one. It would be our packet, page 19, if you have that open.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that pathway is there currently in existence, and there's no proposal to, to change any of that.
Okay.
So that should stay existing for a while?
It should stay existing because I noticed what's there.
Right. Yeah, it's, I think it's about a five-foot wide path and
It's not 10.
I like 10.
It's not, well, the pavement may be five feet wide, but the driveway that there may be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. That's, I was looking for clarity because it was there. And I didn't know if you guys had plans on expanding that or not. And, you know, we've been trying to partner with the communities because almost all of them have seen enjoyment from the communities around them with having that 10-foot wide, you know, greenway that we have. We're trying to connect the entire county at some point in time, even 168 out here down through Virginia, Virginia down to the bridge. So that path will just stay existing at, and does it, does it, are you saying it currently terminates at, at a buffer? Or it continues through, I believe, doesn't it?
It's completely through. That path
Yeah, it diverts off into the neighborhood.
And property and
Right.
continues throughout Pine Island.
Okay. Yeah, I thought it diverted into the neighborhood at some point along there and kind of serviced those cul-de-sac lots in that, that phase. Okay. I guess the only other apprehension I would have is the loss of commercial.
And Mr. Chairman, I share your, I, I share your concerns on that.
Can I, may I speak to that?
Please, absolutely. Yeah, we just want to...
So as you are well aware, Pine Island's been in evolution. And if you recall, a few years ago, our prior council actually engaged the process and allowed allowed us to move commercial property that was currently at the racket club. It was about three acres of property at the racket club. It was commercial property that we actually moved to the north end of Pine Island, which added to another three and a half...
Three and a half acres that's at the north end of Pine Island, north of the fire station. So what we propose to do, as I said, is kind of an evolution, is actually relocate all of our commercial to that end, kind of in one community next to the adjacent commercial area there.
So that would be...
Do we have that in writing?
Yes, sir. You have approved that as commercial allocation at the north end beside the fire station in Pine Island.
So it's on the western side of the road beside, adjacent to the fire station?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it, got it.
Yes, sir. And previously, prior to that, that property was in open space. And so we were trying to be intentional about moving the commercial area to the north end.
Is that the piece between the fire station and the monitor, what was it, shopping store?
Racket Club, shopping store.
Commerce park or whatever it is.
Yes, sir. Right across from the beach access area.
Okay. Got it, all right. You know where we're, okay. All right. Well, that answers that question, though. Okay. Any further question for the applicant this evening, the board? All right, thank you, gentlemen. At this time, I'll open the public comment. Mr. Drazio, you signed up to speak about Pine Island. Did you want to talk about their project this evening, sir?
Awesome.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to double-check that.
One of the census black holes.
He was counting you guys. All right, in that case, we have Mr. Mike Strater as the person signed up, and that's you, so I'm guessing you're out. And then, that's it, so, all right. Would anyone in the room like to speak to this agenda item this evening before I close the public comment? Okay, thank you. All right. Any further discussion from the board on this item?
Mr. Chairman, we have been, and I want to say for three years, we've tried to get the setbacks to 15 feet due to massive concern from a fire safety perspective in between housing units. And I, in reading through the paperwork, it lists their setback is 10-foot. And I would request that as one of the conditions of the development, that we increase that setback to 15 feet, as we've been working on for a while, and would like to see that. And that's, that's, that has been a consistent theme from the fire department over and over again for the last probably eight years, is that with the size of the structures that we've been putting in in Corolla, 10-foot setback, that puts it at 20 feet in between units, we have a disaster getting ready to happen.
Okay. Well, I guess we would need the applicant to come back up. If we place a condition on you for that, you would have to agree to that condition.
Let me, let me just explain, if this were a conditional rezoning, the applicant and the Board of Commissioners, we have to agree on conditions. This is a use permit amendment application, and so it is not required that the applicant agree to conditions that the board intends to place upon a permit.
Okay. Well, since you're here, is that something you guys would consider? And we don't have to extend it, but I would...
The root of Mr. Beaumont's concern is well-recognized, and it wouldn't be an issue with this development whatsoever. We're, we're having to work with our proposed needed fire flows, and we're having to increase our setbacks to ensure the structure separation anyway. So what you're seeing on our plats are the county minimum. We wouldn't have any issue with when that change does take place. And that's why we've been so tuned into it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, would you like to make that motion since you want to, or would you like me to make the motion? This is my district.
It is your district, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'm going to approve PD 19-07, Pine Island amended sketch use plan permit with staff recommendations because the applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the use permit review standards of the UDO. Extra conditions, one, the applicant must comply with all applicable review standards of the UDO. Two, the conditions of approval necessary to ensure the compliance with the review standards of the UDO and to prevent or minimize adverse effects of the development application on the surrounding lands. Item A, the subdivision plan will be reviewed when preliminary plat application is submitted. And condition three, to change the setbacks to, did you say 15-foot minimum? 15-foot minimum on the, on the proposed lots. One, the use will not endanger the public health or safety. The use conforms to existing land uses and consideration we'll be giving through site plan design. A new roadway will be constructed to NC DOT standards, and public water will meet state regulations. Two, the use will not injure the adjoining value of abutting or adjoining lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. The use will be compliant, excuse me, the use will complement adjoining existing uses, and proposed dwellings are equivalently sized to the adjoining subdivision. Three, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans. The 2006 land use plan classifies this area as full service within the Corolla sub area. Residential development in full-service areas should have a base density of two units per acre, but could be increased to three or four units per acre through overlay zoning depending upon service available and the potential impact on surrounding areas. An overall density of no more than three units per acre should apply to PUDs in the Corolla sub area. The proposed use is consistent with the policies of the plan, including Policy HM1. Currituck County shall encourage development to incur at densities appropriate for the location. Location and density factors shall include whether the development is within the environmentally suitable area, the type and capacity of sewage treatment available to the site, the adequacy of transportation facilities providing access to the site, and the proximity of the site to existing and planned urban areas. Policy HM3, Currituck County shall especially encourage two forms of residential development, each with the objective of avoiding traditional suburban sprawl. One, open space developments that cluster homes on less land preserving permanently dedicated open space and often employ onsite for community sewage treatments. Two, compact mixed-use developments or developments near a mixture of uses that promote or return to balanced self-supporting community centers generally served by centralized water and sewer. The types of developments are contemplated for the full-service areas identified in the future land use map. Four, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. The proposed use will not exceed the county's ability to provide those adequate public facilities. Utility services are proposed for the site, wastewater and water capacity are available, and onsite stormwater management is proposed for the additional runoff.
I second it.
Thanks, sir. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, it carries unanimously. Thank you all. My cell reset here. Next item on the agenda, PB 14-06, excuse me, PB 14-16, Turnpike Properties, Pine Island. Amended use permit to modify the airstrip located in...
Mr. Chairman?
On Ocean Trail?
Is it 14 or PB 04?
PB, oh, sorry, PB 04-16. Turnpike Properties, Pine Island, amended use permit to modify the airstrip located on Ocean Trail, Corolla, Tax Map 128, Parcel 2L, Poplar Branch Beach Township. And with that, do we need to re swear in as a separate agenda item, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So anyone wishing to speak to this matter, please come up and left hand on the bubble and right hand in the air. All right, do you all solemnly swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, sir, help you God?
Yes.
Thank you all. All right, Ms. Liz Cicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. During this process and in reviewing Turnpike's request, we noticed there was a discrepancy than what was originally approved with the airstrip and what was currently on the ground. So this is an aerial of the airstrip in Pine Island. It is contained, their existing use is an airport, an airstrip, and open space. The parcel size is 53.31 acres. It is zoned SFO with the planned unit development overlay. And once again, it's across the street. It is within the full-service area of the Corolla sub area in the 2006 land use plan. So Turnpike Properties is requesting approximately 2,450 square feet of pavement was added to the northern end. Here's a very good diagram. The 2,000, 2,400 square feet of pavement was added to the northern end of the existing airstrip since the use permit was issued in 2004. This application is to amend the use permit to bring it into alignment with what is currently on the ground. So you see what was approved originally in 2004, use permit, special use permit, it's in blue. And the area in yellow is what has been added in the, since 2004, without updating or revising their use permit for the airstrip. Because this is a very small change, the technical review committee does recommend adoption of this use permit subject to the following existing conditions of approval for this airstrip. That all operations must be conducted in accordance with FAA regulations, that no additional commercial activity other than the use of the airstrip shall occur, no additional structures or buildings on this property, including hangars or fuel tanks, shall be permitted, and that as a continuing condition to this approval, the applicant will meet and continue to meet all requirements of the county's unified development ordinance. So essentially, we found more pavement out there than was exist, existing than what was originally approved. It is only 2,450 square feet. We just want to bring everything into alignment. We thought this was a good opportunity to clean, to clean everything up and make sure we're consistent. So for the use permit standards, once again, staff is typically responsible for two of them, that it will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plans. And we find that the 2006 land use plan classifies this site as full service within the Corolla sub area, and proposed use is consistent with the unified development ordinance. Airports are in allowable use and planned unit development through the approval of a use permit, and that the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including but not limited to schools, fire, rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities. And we find that Currituck County has adequate public facilities to serve this use. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have at this point about this request.
How did you discover the extra pavement?
I have very astute staff.
Right. All right. Okay. Any questions for Ms. Liz Cicero? All right, well, I'll invite the applicant up if you guys want to tell us anything we don't already know. No?
If you have some questions, we'd be glad to try to address them, but I think...
The aviator is running light. It's the aviator's going to come in.
Hey, so, as I understand correct, our current ops, there are no night usage of the airstrip, correct?
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta come on up and say that one out loud.
Yes. No lights on the field.
Right. And how is that restricted? Because when you say per the FAA, I think there's more restrictions on that airfield than just the FAA.
Where would those come from? The POA?
Because it's a private, it's not a public strip. It's a private strip.
It is a private strip.
And so my only question on the verbiage is FAA or the PO, either the PUD or the...
HOA.
Or the HOA, right?
It would actually be the owner.
So I think that needs to be added, because whichever is stricter is what I think is the way to read it.
Could you do an and/or?
Yeah.
What's, whichever is stricter.
Yeah.
So the FAA would say you can't fly into there under instrument conditions. The HOA is going to say, or nighttime, right? Reasonable?
Does that, does that make any sense?
I think so. I'd like to hear.
Well, what happens is, if we say per the FAA, and that, that then becomes the condition of the permit.
Right.
Potentially, the HOA isn't happy with that, and so it establishes the HOA is the governing authority of more restrictive use of that airport than the FAA. Right now, that, that use permit would basically say the FAA's rules reign.
Right, but I think it still would be considered a private strip, which would require permission of the owner in order for you to enter into the airstrip. I mean, I don't have...
I agree. I'm just looking for, out for the residents of Pine Island to make sure that they understand their HOA still is the final authority as...
To more restrictive than the FAA.
Well, it's not the HOA, it's the owner of the airstrip.
The owner.
Which, which is Turnpike.
Is not the airstrip exempted from the HOA?
It is not part of the subdivision. It was never submitted to the declaration, just like other parts of Pine Island are not submitted to the declaration. The Hampton Inn is not part of the Pine Island Property Owners Association. Pine Island Reserve is not part of the Pine Island Property Owners Association. Pine Island Club is not part of the Pine Island Property Owners Association.
So why is it included in the PUD?
It is part of the Pine Island Planned Unit Development, but there are multiple communities inside of the Pine Island PUD.
Right. Yeah, there's several different communities and boards and everything else. There's, and then there.
Kind of the history behind this, I've been with Turnpike now for 14 years. I think we've been through amended sketch plan at least three times since I've been here. This pavement actually predates me coming onboard at Turnpike. This pavement, I think, was actually associated when the permit was initially issued for Sea Air, which was an air charter operation that was owned by Turnpike Properties. And I think the pavement at that time was added as an additional parking space for that charter operation.
Okay. Anything further you get? Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'll open up the public comment for this agenda item, and I have you two gentlemen signed up for that again this evening. I'm assuming you've made your peace. Would anyone else like to speak to this item before I close the public comment? All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment. And move to approve PB 04-16, Turnpike Properties, Pine Island airstrip use permit app, use permit amended, amendment number one, with staff recommendations because the applicant has demonstrated the proposed use meets the use permit review standards of the UDO. Additional conditions of approval, all operations must be conducted in accordance with FAA regulations. Two, no additional commercial activity other than the use of the airstrip shall occur. Three, no additional structures or building on this property, including hangars or fuel tanks, shall be permitted. And four, that it is a continuing condition, that as a continuing condition of this approval, the applicant will meet and continue to meet all requirements of the county's unified development ordinance. One, the use will not endanger the public health or safety. Subject area has been in existing pavement since at least 2008, and does not present potential dangers. Two, the use will not, will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony in the area in which it is located. The use will remain in harmony with the adjoining existing airport use. The subject area is a slight increase in the existing area, airport use area. Man, I am tongue-tied tonight. Three, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other specifically adopted plans. Specifically, the 2000 use, land use plan classifies this site as full service, full service within the Corolla sub area, and the proposed use is consistent with the unified developments. Airports are in allowable use and a planned unit development through approval of a use permit. Four, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. I don't know what I said. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And take a brief five-minute recess, and we'll continue the meeting. Thank you. Item A, PB 19-5, Windswept Pines, a request to conditional zone, 66.8 acres from conditional mixed residential to conditional mixed residential, and add 14 residential lots, streets, and modify phases in the Windswept Pine Development located on the north side of Baxter Road and Moyoc. Tax map 9H, parcels 42 through 58. Tax map 9H parcels 42 through 58, 1 through 12, and OSA-OSC, and tax map 9 parcels 6A and 11L in the Moayak Township. This item, it's been before and before, and Mr. Stike Leather, I believe you have some.
Yes, sir. I've got, I've got an update. We received a request from the applicant today, and I'm going to actually just read you the email that they sent us. We are requesting on behalf of Allied Properties LLC, the continuation of the Windswept Pines' amended conditional zoning request that is on this evening's county commissioners' agenda. The reason for this continuation is that we understand the Board of Education is working on a plan for the Moayak schools, and completion of that plan is needed for decisions to be made that affect school capacity and allocation of that capacity. They went on to say in a later email, as a follow-up, they, the applicant would like to suggest deferring this item for at least a month. We don't want to rush it and are more interested in the BOC having the best information they can obtain regarding schools as a basis for their decision. That process, because it came in so late, rests in front of the Board of Commissioners. You all have to make a determination. If you want to defer it, it can only be deferred once, and it can only be deferred for up to six months.
Okay.
Do we not have the information on the school capacity?
Yes, at the Board of Commissioner, or the Board of Education meeting that I attended with the chairman, they voted the capacity at Moayak Elementary School at 560, and it's currently at 601.
And the applicant is not here this evening to, to speak to anything, is that correct?
I don't believe so. I don't believe anybody's here from that case. The, the other thing is that they, in the UDO, it does state that the Board in order to defer has to, they have to present reasonable cause. In this case, I think that they're presenting the cause as a lack of information about school capacities.
And at the time, they did not have the information the board currently has. Is that-
At the time, I think there was still capacity.
We hadn't, no, we were, well, we were running up on it.
We were getting close, but we didn't have the final numbers.
If, Mr. Chairman, the number previous to the Board, to the Board of Education voting was 583. That was the number we had been given.
That number-
They had already passed that number.
Yeah, occupants-
And so they decreased the capacity number at the Board of Education meeting, and they've increased the number of students in the schools since that time.
Okay.
But this particular project, these 14 lots, we're talking about two additional students in the elementary, is that right?
I think it's, I think it rounds to three because of the-
It's like two and a half or two and a quarter.
Because of the decimals, it, it rounds to three. So that, that is correct.
Did they give a timeframe on how long they'd like to have it?
He said a month.
At least a month.
We can go up to six months.
Yeah, but if they've only requested 30 days, then I'm not going to, you know.
Is anything going to change in six months as far as capacity? Are we going to go down in capacity?
I don't know. I mean it.
The only thing that could potentially change that, that the county manager alluded to is that the Board of Education makes a decision for next year, which would increase the capacity at the elementary schools. So the addition of portables or redistricting would affect that. Very good question, though.
Not in six months, though.
In six months. Well, I think it's the plan, but I, I agree. I, I don't think a solution's going to be in place in six months.
From an adequate facility standpoint, from the staff perspective, what we would need to see from the Board of Education to change that capacity number is an actual motion by them changing the capacity number. So simply adding mobile units-
Right.
-or redistricting in itself, while it does have some effect probably on the capacity, until they actually make a motion to change that 560 number, that's what staff is going to lean on making recommendations to this board.
When do we think that will happen?
Well, what they alluded to at the meeting that we went to, the Board of Education, is it will stay at 560 through this school year and through next school year, and then the year after that would go to 529. They, they did not-
It's going to go down.
Yeah, they did not allude to any increase in what they call the capacity for Moayak Elementary School.
And, and-
They, now, what they did say, and I do want to be clear about this, they're not going to turn any students away. So to them, adding mobile classrooms, while it allows more seats potentially, does not increase, and this is, this is how they phrased it, does not increase the capacity. It allows for the adequate capacity, I guess is the way to say it.
Okay, so we give them 30 days, gather some more information, come before us, then if nothing's changed, if they haven't brought anything good, then we can act on it right then on there.
Well, that, that would be it for them.
Yeah, that would be it then. If they, they want 30 days, present what they can, what they find to us, we'll decide on it, and then be done with it. And move on.
Okay. Well, would you like to put that to the board?
No, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve a 30-day, a continuance on-
So a date certain, that would be the October 21st meeting?
Yes, yes, for the October 21st meeting for PB 19-15.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
One against. Thank you. Next agenda item is new business. Item A, consideration of a contract for the purchase of fire apparatus for the Moayak Volunteer Fire Department. Is that going to be Mr. McCree or yourself? It's a contract?
That's me.
It's a contract, man.
It's me.
That's my territory.
Um, I'll take this one.
All right.
So you all actually approved the funding for this. Between the funding approval and this, there was a question about who was actually going to purchase the fire truck. It was decided it's probably better for the county to actually make the purchase, and because of that, we have to bring the contract before the board for approval. So this is, the fire truck that you all had previously funded for Moayak Fire Department, this is just the contract portion.
Move to approve the contract.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item B, Public Safety Building Project Review. Mr. Stike Leather.
Oh, this is actually going to be Michelle Perry.
All right. Can see a way in the back hiding back there.
I haven't even seen her sitting back there this evening. Geez.
Just a timeout. Well, Michelle.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Earlier this year, the county entered into a design-build services contract with Sussex Development Corporation. The initial contract was for the design portion of the contract. It was in the amount of approximately $1.15 million. At this time, the design is now complete. The contractor has bid the project and provided us with a guaranteed maximum price to construct the facility. The approximate amount of the guaranteed maximum price is $23 million. That does include that initial $1.15 million that I just mentioned. The, I want to kind of go into some of the funding items. I know you guys have been seeing on your previous board meetings where we've gone to LGC for approval of a bank loan for $21.4 million. LGC met last week and approved our bank loan. In addition to that, the College of Almarl, who's in a portion of our facility, is also receiving a state bond in the amount of $1 million. That will go towards design and construction of the facility. And then very recently, the county has also been awarded a grant from the 911 Board in the amount of a little over a half a million dollars to go towards the 911 portion of the facility. So tonight, I'm here to recommend approval and authorization for the county manager to execute the GMP amendment to Sussex Development's contract for the total project amount, and I want to say the total GMP contract amount of $22,979, and $979,454.
No sense. Okay.
Did I understand her to say the manager's personally guaranteeing this?
Yes, I believe she did say that. Okay. Thank you. I guess at this point, we need a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If you're not unanimous, thank you very much for hanging out with us this evening. Item C, consideration of an amendment to the Currituck County Personnel Parls. The Article 6, Holiday and Leave. I believe that is you, right?
It is, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. What you have before you tonight is, is a cleanup of sorts. Previously, Currituck County offered time off accruals to all employees at the same rate per hour worked. So in other words, no matter how many hours, whether you're a 40-hour employee, like most of the staff, or a, previously a 42-hour employee, like Sheriff's Office, or EMS, or Communications, you earn the same amount of vacation time. So what that meant is that essentially, a 40-hour employee could take more days off in the course of a year than a 12-hour employee. The, the difference was so small there, it, I guess it didn't cause any issue. When we created the fire service, they are what is considered a 56-hour employee. And so there's quite a bit of disparity. So one of the things we've heard from our fire division is that they would like to see that situation rectified. We have had a lot of turnover in the fire division, and this is one of the first things that they mention as a, as a area that they're dissatisfied. However, in addressing it as the manager, I didn't feel like it was appropriate to just address it for the 56-hour employees. So this amendment before you actually addresses it for the 42-hour employees as well. So the fire service will see an increase in the accrual rate, as well as Sheriff's Office, EMS, telecommunications, and detention center employees. And so it really brings, the easiest way to think of it is instead of everybody accruing the same number of hours in a year, they accrue the same number of days off in a year. That's basically it. The maximum that you can carry over as vacation time from year to year is left at the same for all of them, which is 240 hours. That was done to limit the amount of fiscal liability to the county so that if somebody leaves, it's the same amount that they would have had, no matter if they're in fire, no matter if they're in the 42-hour, like the Sheriff's Office. And so it was just a cleaner way to make sure that there's not this increased cost to balloons. Now, that doesn't mean they lose that time. It means it converts to sick time. And that's important because your sick time as a local government employee is time that can count towards your retirement. So it has value. It's just not value the county has to pay out if you separate from service. So that is the, the gist of the, of the amendment. It's to clean up this disparity between the different shift work hours, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have about it.
Fire away, sir.
I need to ask a question. Since my wife is employed in the 911 center, do I need to recuse myself for this vote?
You are required by statute to vote except on those things that affect you financially or that affect, or that deal with your personal conduct.
I think it would be cleaner if I did.
Well, I think, I, I was going to say, I, it's probably rem-
My answer, you guys are tired of it.
It's probably remote, it's probably remote that that would affect you financially, but, but to, so there'd be, avoid an appearance of impropriety, I would suggest that you would-
I'd like to also-
You, you would want, you would want to ask to be excused from the vote, and probably Commissioner McCord as well, given his-
I would like to be recused as well, and that still gives you-
And then, and then, assuming the board members will, will excuse you, then I would suggest that you leave the room during the vote.
Okay. Do we need to vote on-
Do we need to vote to recuse us?
Yes.
I'll make the motion that we recuse Commissioner, that is Commissioner Kevin McCord from voting on this matter.
Second.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good night.
You have to come back. All right. Any questions for the county manager? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just offer that, that, you know, this is one of the most significant issues that has faced the, our firefighters and our EMTs. And, because it, they didn't just pay for it on a earning side of the house, but they also paid for it depending on when they took vacation. It literally could cost them significantly more than an hour per hour. So I think this, this is one of the steps that we need to take to right an inadvertent wrong. I, I don't believe it was done intentionally, but certainly the unintended consequences of our work shift. I think that this is a, a really necessary to right, right what's been wrong.
Okay.
And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve-
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? I just want to get them.
Just for the board's information, this probably will not be the, the last piece of cleanup-
No.
-in this arena. This is the first. So to those out there who are in our fire service-
We're not done yet.
Yeah, it's a, it's a process, so.
Yep. Gentlemen, it was a, it was a hard fought vote, but we got it done.
Thank you for your service.
All right. Next item on the agenda, D, Hurricane Dorian Action Items. Mr. Ben.
Yes, sir. So essentially, this is going to clean up a lot of budget amendments that we needed for the hurricane, as well as give the notice to proceed for our debris monitoring contract and our debris pickup. This is what I referred to earlier in the manager's report about people getting their woody debris out to the right of way. The first piece of this is going to be a budget amendment. You'll see on the budget amendment, there's roughly $808,878 that we anticipate being spent because of the storm. That revenue, we are projecting it to come in from FEMA. If not, we have funds set aside to handle disaster recovery in our budget. But right now, we are projecting it will come in from FEMA public assistance. We won't know that until they tell us what categories were declared for.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns on the board? I'll whip it forward for a motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, pass unanimously. Thank you. Uh, next item is public comment. Thank you all for patiently waiting out there. We had to defer till we got everybody here. And, Mr. Hall, did you say you wanted Mr. Stanley to come up as your keynote speaker first? Okay. Mr. Stanley, please come up.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good evening.
Uh, just a brief reminder, if you haven't been before, it's a three-minute public comment session, and the lights will tell you when to go stop and go faster.
And if I may pass out some material?
Okay.
Thank you.
If you would, you can hand that over to your, to your left.
Thank you. In fact, I probably should.
And I will need your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes. Name is Bobby Stanley, 196 Old Jury Road, Moayak, 27958.
No, Kevin doesn't give one. All right. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, first, I'm going to summarize a letter that's in that package. Secondly, the first picture separated from the others is the current state of the property we're discussing, thus proving that things that were to be corrected have not yet been In summary, since about mid-June of this year, all of the neighbors on Old Jury Road have noticed a decline in our water source, meaning color, clarity, smell. Didn't really talk much across the board because we're all on independent well systems, so we really didn't know to what degree. But during the recent hurricane, the ones that are backing up to Mr. Old's development of Waterly off of Tulsa Creek Road had significant flooding from our back ditches. We have incurred flooding in the past, but they always come from the Old Jury roadside and back onto the property. This anomaly created the opposite, and it did not go away. The whole day of the 6th, we flooded, of course, and then we continued to flood some on the 7th. On the 7th, two neighbors and myself went on the back property and started discussing it, and they took on to discover what the problem was. They went through the back ditch, went over on the side of the development to find a huge retention pond that was cut into our existing drainage ditch, as well as a giant diesel pump that had been pumping water onto our station. So we assumed that was definitely the issue from our-
Effects. Yep, there you go.
Sorry, I'm a pacemaker.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, pass unanimously. Thank you. Uh, next item is public comment.
They went through the back ditch, went over on the side of the development to find a huge retention pond that was cut into our existing drainage ditch, as well as a giant diesel pump that had been pumping water onto our station. So, we assumed that was definitely the issue from our...
Ex. Yep, there you go.
On the morning of the 9th, I personally went back on the property and started exploring, and the pumps were lit off.
Got a little echo in here, Alex.
Let me step back. Is it better?
Yeah, he can adjust the mic. Thank you.
On the morning of the 9th, I went on the property to explore, to see what the situation was. Again, I saw the large retention pond. I saw the ditch cut from one of their side ditches, if you will, owned to our ditch, which was flooding our property. And again, the pump was pumping, I don't know what the rate was, but it was full-blown. In fact, anybody who saw the news, that was the picture I saw that morning. So, definitely, again, was the cause of the flooding. As we further discuss it in the neighborhood, we thought that possibly, that might be the issue for our quality of water in the last couple of months. Mr. Old did come to speak with us after it hit the news source. He did accept responsibility or blame, but some of the conditions we asked him for, he denied. What we're looking for is a revocation of his special use permit because of this until such time, we're recommending a year, but until such time that he can appropriately solve his drainage problem on Waterly, and possibly, an investigation from the board, or at least, I've got some things in there, basically, made up of an engineering team, of course, planning, and whoever you see fit, to do a full investigation until such time that he is concurrence with, you know, the current, what is it, UDO. Lastly, we have looked through the UDO. I personally looked through it. I found issues in probably every chapter with what he's doing on the property, but specifically, Chapter 7. If you'll look at your ladders, I've got 10 things on there that I know he's clear in violation of. And again, in closing for my comments, I would ask that the board propose a revocation of his special permit, special use permit, until such time that he's in total compliance of the UDO, and not putting us in any threat.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Thanks for coming up. Karen Caldwell, I had you next, sir. Mike, would you like to come up?
My name is Mike Hall. I live at 174 Old Jury Road. Three of our 10 acre parcels butt up, as they're saying, to this property, and one of the problems we have was, these three developments that are beside us, going behind the library and going further towards the sanitation center, we're supposed to have compliance with stormwater management together, not one separate. This development was started. He built the retention ponds. Your planning director came out to the meeting, told me he was in violation, showed us on the map, showed him on the map, replaced his pump was on the wrong side. He actually, we had to turn it around, because he even had the map wrong. It showed that he was not allowed to take and cut a ditch seven foot wide, three feet deep, from his retention pond into our ditch. He also had the pump, which is the size of an SUV, that ran and dumped into the farmer's field, as well as our ditch. Now, one of the things in conversation, he also cut the silt fence.
Is that what this picture is in?
Possibly, yes, I believe. Yes. So that ditch is, I'd say, 30 feet long, seven feet wide, three feet deep. Well, what he did was, when you issued him a violation notice, he turned the pump off, and eventually, now, this is four days later, he still said he hadn't been out there, even though he knew about it and everything else. He said, "Well, all right, I'll get into it." Well, three days later, and he was out there when you were out there, and he could've walked it with us. He chose not to. He still hadn't walked out there. Now, you go four days later, he fixed the silt fence halfway, didn't fill in the ditch. It's still, if you look at it, it's running under the silt fence, because it's three feet deep. He didn't fill it in. And his excuse was, "Well, you have to understand, these holding ponds, they weren't working properly, so I had to drain them so they would work properly." I'm sorry, that's what the holding pond's for. Plus, he said that he hadn't built the ditch between the two holding ponds, which would drive it towards the other way. So, again, they wouldn't work properly, so he hadn't done his work properly. So we were getting the effect of it. Our neighbors, by weight and volume, there was water sitting two and three feet deep on two-thirds of their three lots. Two and three feet deep. By weight and volume, that could do damage to their septic systems and their wells. Straight from the manuals, says it can. Weight and volume and distance. Two-thirds of their lots, on a 10-acre lot, are full of water. We've had flooding there before, where there's been six inches, maybe half the lot, you know, and within an hour or two, it's gone. This time, it isn't working. It's not working. Then, fast forward, a few days later, the Outer Banks got five inches of rain. We got zero. Fast forward, four more days later, we got 2.6 inches of rain. Guess what? The water still hadn't gone down, so guess what? These lots flooded again. So here, we have two events, 3.6 and 2.6, when it comes to inches of rain, and we're done with the hurricane and this other storm. And the water, as of last night, when I looked at it before it got dark, I can tell you, it was still full in the ditches. Normally, the front ditches are the ones that fill, not the back. This time, it's the back, which is adjacent to his property. He was not to be draining our property. He did it anyways. He did harm to our property. That is my concern here, is that we have to stop this. And if he can't be in compliance, or if the engineer was wrong, we need to find out. And he still hadn't finished the ditch to fill it in. Well, he's still working. He's worked yesterday, he worked today. So that tells me that he's not gonna be in compliance. We need to stop that until he is. You know, and I have a problem with it. And a perfect example, and when it comes to contamination, we asked for him to check our wells, check our septic. We asked him to take him to a soil sample. The well, a second time maybe in six months, we asked if it is contaminated, for him to hook us up to county water, at his expense. And I'll cite an example. If you've ever been up on Centerville Turnpike in the city of Chesapeake, there's a golf course right by the fire station, Greenhaven Farms. That is fly ash by Dominion Power. I used to live up there. And guess what they did? They brought in, and the city said, "It's safe. We're not gonna attach any water. They can't build any water hazards. So it'll never flood and bother your septic or your wells." Well, lo and behold, let's go from 2000 to 2003. Guess what they did? They allowed him to build two ponds and sink a well, and all the wells got toxic. And the citizens had to go out there and fight with the city and Dominion Power and the golf course, and eventually, they had to hook up those residents at the city's expense to county water, or to city water. It may not be fly ash, but we're at the same problem. Either we stop it, because everybody's always complaining, saying, "What do we do with this runoff? What if these holding ponds don't work?" Here's a builder that turned right around and said to you, or said to us, "I drained it because the holding pond wasn't working right." Well, it's supposed to hold the water. It's okay. But it was so flooded out there, the holding ponds, you couldn't even pick them out. You'll see by those pictures, it looked like a lake. And they didn't care. So either we stop it now, so when we sit there and say to another developer, "Don't do it." And if you're in doubt, ask the planning department, the inspectors, or somebody else. They did neither. And then they took their sweet time, and still, two weeks later now, have not fixed it all the way. That tells me, that's not a good neighbor policy. And I don't wanna ever take somebody's chance to make, you know, a living, but not at my expense. Not when it could reach into my pocket. And because we own those ditches, and we own our wells, and we own our septic, I'm gonna have to sue him. You're not gonna cover my lawsuit, but you can stop him until he fixes everything, and we make sure, based on engineering, and when those other ditches get done, that it won't happen to somebody else in another neighborhood. I'll answer any questions.
I don't have any at this time. We've got staff, I know they went out and looked at it, and will continue to do so.
All right. Well, I ask again, before we leave tonight, that you stop until he complies, and we're satisfied, and somebody comes to us and says, "We've looked at it. You guys can see it." I'm asking for that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Ms. Caldwell, are you gonna grace us with your presence this evening, or are you okay?
Hello, thank you. I'm Karen Caldwell, and my address is 172 Old Jury Road. As you see the pictures of the farm field and the flooding, and possibly, maybe, part of my yard, I have many photos I can show you, and I have showed Mr. Etheridge many of them. Hurricane came in, and it came in Thursday evening. It rained through part of Friday. I called Jamie. He works out of town, and I said, "You need to come home. We're flooding so bad, I've never seen anything like this." He's like, "No, it's only hurricane, you know, it's one, category one. You'll be fine." I'm like, "No, it's almost breaching. It's coming into the barn. I've never seen it flood so fast." Within hours, that water, we're on 10 and a half acres, reached from their ditch line, or their swell, whatever that's supposed to be called. Then there's the, like, silt fence, then our ditch. It was coming over from, we have like a little berm between our ditch line and our back pasture where the barn is. It was seeping over that and coming over. And it was just flooding in. I have pictures of it getting ready to breach the back of the barn, the front of the barn. I have shots, I don't know, eight acres away flooded in water. And I'm not sure if you have any of those. I have them on my phone. It just continually to flood. Even when it stopped raining, it kept flooding. And I'm like, "How can this be?" It didn't drain, and normally, if we have our heaviest storms, our ditch lines will flood, and they'll flood heavy. But they flood there, in a few low-lying places here and there. And within hours, they drain. This took days, days. And it was started, like, after I... I had boots, I had muff boots. I live in camo and everything. Muff boots up to here. The water was coming over that walk into the barn to go back and forth to the house. This was for days. And then, the next storm came in the following week, I think, on another Thursday, and it was all over again. Not as severe, but we flooded within hours. The same thing, and I'm still wet out there from that last storm. I can't mow. The mosquitoes are so bad. And then, I do have horses, and I know horses are, they know what to do in storms, and they know where to go. But if they can't find dry land, they're standing in this water. Their hoofs are submerged in this water, and that causes hoof disease, white line, thrush. There's no high land for them to get on. And it's still, my property's still wet. Never seen it 19 years been there. No. In the last five years, I can say there's been two big storms we have encountered. And we had serious flooding. But within hours, it started to drain, not days. It didn't take three days for it to drain. If anybody wants to see any pictures from my yard, I'd be happy to show them to you.
Okay. Thank you. We got a lot of pictures in this folder, so... Okay. Thank you.
My name is Scott Alley. I live at the end of Old Jury Road. I know some of you are a little familiar with my property. I'm just gonna reiterate what I told Justin Olds. I lived down there for 15 years. I'm not even gonna pretend to know, I'm not an engineer, I don't know what they're doing back there, but whatever they've done has changed the infrastructure of the property down there. I've been there for 15 years, been through Matthew, some big northeastern storms, and that hurricane, our ditches flooded immediately. And a week later, last Thursday, when we had the thunderstorm, again, my ditches were overflowing very quickly. And I told Justin Olds at the time, "They're very early on this project, and we're having these problems already. I just wanna make sure that, moving forward, we don't have more problems." And it doesn't seem like anything's being fixed at this time, as my neighbors have already spoke. So, that's just my biggest concern. Something has changed. I don't know what it is. And I just, I don't wanna see it getting worse, being an adjacent landowner, because they are very early into this project, so...
Mr. Alley, before the storm, were you guys have any problems?
No.
No? Okay.
No.
Just wanna make sure that you wouldn't have any well issues, or anything like that, from lowering groundwater, or anything like that.
And actually, my property, I bought my property from Billy Spruill. I don't know who's familiar, but he'd had it for a long time, and he'd brought a lot of fill in there. And as far as on that road, it was pretty apparent during Matthew, when we had all the flooding, our property stayed drier than anybody else's on that road. And that is not the case now. So, but like I said, I have no clue. I don't know what they're doing. I haven't even walked back there yet. I've seen the videos and the pictures that the neighbors have taken, but something has changed. They've done something different back there to change the way our properties are draining.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Lastly, I have Mr. Larry. I'm gonna get your name wrong. Is it Hebert?
Yes.
You're good? Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody else wanna speak to this this evening? Or anything else this evening? Public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something if I could.
Please.
After I saw the Andy Fox TV10 report, I reached out to Karen Caldwell and asked her, "Could I come by and just see for myself what was going on?" And so, I went out to see her on Sunday. Went out about 2:00. We walked around her property. I had my boots on. They weren't as high as her boots, but I had my boots on. It had been three days since they had rained, and she still had water standing in her yard. The yard was mushy. The pasture was real mushy. The horses, she has several horses, they were standing in water. I don't know a whole lot about horses, but she informed me that if they stand in water like that, it can affect their hooves, and it's very dangerous for them. I checked with the county today about, it is a requirement that they have silt fencing and a berm around it, and you can see that it was knocked down. Somebody cut a hole through that berm, through the fencing, and dug the ditch. The pumps are not, they were not running on Sunday, but the ditch is still there. There's water in the ditch, and it's overflowing into their property. I don't feel like that this is a minor infraction. It's not like somebody just accidentally cutting trees down, or somebody going in and maybe making a driveway a little larger, which I think that's kinda bad, but it's not like that. There were oil drums out floating in the field. There was gas cans turned over, and God knows what else was out there in the field. I know they've got to be worried that their wells are probably polluted, and we don't know what a long-term effect this might have on the people who are living there, or on their animals. People love their animals, just like they do other humans, so we don't know how they'll be affected either. So I would like to make a motion to revoke Justin Old's special use permit until such time that we know the issues are resolved, to the satisfaction of the homeowners affected by his carelessness and his disregard for their well-being. I make a motion because Mr. Old's special use permit has endangered the public health and safety of people living out there, and it has injured the value of the adjoining lands, and it's certainly not in harmony with the surrounding land.
Mr. McCrea, is that something we can take up at this?
Well, no, it's not. The Unified Development Ordinance provides a number of different remedies for violations of the ordinance and violations of permits issued under the ordinance. One remedy is indeed revocation of a use permit, but the ordinance lays out a process which must first be followed, which is first, to give notice to the violator, from the planning director, of the revocation of the use permit. The notice in is to inform the permit holder of the grounds for the revocation. There then must be a hearing, at which time, the burden is on those or the entity, which I guess would be the county, that intends to revoke the permit. So it's much like the quasi-judicial proceeding you had at the time that you issued the use permit. And then finally, a motion could then be made, depending upon the evidence presented during that hearing, to revoke. So while revocation is a remedy, there would be the necessity of going through a process to get there.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Cyclother, you've sent county staff out there. Obviously, it made the news. So, when was the last time we were on that property to look at, is he in compliance? Did we do any kind of stop work order on any other parts of the property, or anything of that nature?
So, one point of clarification, just so that the board knows, county staff had no involvement in the news part of it. That was not something that we do. We just work within the bounds of our UDO. I will defer to Ms. LaCicero to discuss the last time that we visited the property. All we did was issue a notice of violation, not a stop work order.
Okay.
And I think that the county attorney could probably speak a little more to the issuance of a stop work order, as it exists, for a use permit. It's a little different, though, because stop work orders are typically associated with a building permit. And right now, there is no building permit out there. But I'll let Ms. LaCicero first speak to the last part of the investigation.
The last time county staff was on the property was last Tuesday, when we went to visit, at the request of the property owners, and we attended the meeting with the property We attended the meeting with the property owners, and Mr. Old, both Mr. Kim Old and Mr. Justin Old were present at the meeting. After we received a notice of complaint, we sent and reviewed the plans. We sent the code enforcement officer onto the property on Monday morning, and found the pump was running. She took some pictures. We got back, she got back into the office. We compiled the notice of violation, and we sent the notice of violation to Mr. Old for both Glenmore Ridge and Currytuck Reserve. It's an interesting situation on this property. This stormwater BNP is basically over three developments out there, Currytuck Reserve, Glenmore Ridge, and Waterly. And so there's several things that are interacting, and they are still under construction and doing work right now. Because it is not a building, we couldn't issue a stop work order. There is a notice of violation. I did email Mr. Old and request that the pumping stop immediately, which he did. He replied to me that the pumping has been stopped, but that he should also fix the ditch. Typically, we work with people in these situations from 10 to 30 days to fix something like a ditch. And evidently, we have not gone back out there to check to see if this ditch has been fixed.
Did we give him a timeframe?
I did not, but I said...
I think we should with the severity of some of the issues going on and what's been noted about the possible contaminations. I just think his staff needs to follow up and put some timelines, and let's try to get through this and make sure it's, something's done appropriately.
So to lay out to the board the steps outside of the revocation of a use permit, a timeframe can be set, and then we go into civil citations.
Right.
Which accrue at a rate of $500 a day until the situation is resolved.
Right.
Now, if it's the pleasure of the board, staff can move forward with direction that, you know, tomorrow is the last day he has to fix the ditch. We can check it tomorrow. If it's not fixed, we can, believe we can move into the civil citation stage at any point. Is that correct?
That's what I believe.
So it's at our discretion.
So, okay, so you did not give him a timeframe to correct the issue. Is that correct?
Correct. We did not. To fix the ditch, we said, "Do not, no more pumping."
Right.
From that location.
Right. And fix the ditch.
And fix the ditch.
But they obviously haven't fixed the silt line and all that stuff yet, so.
Or...
I guess it's with the ditch not fixed, I guess it's seeping. One of those pictures, reaching out.
Right.
So we can go visit it tomorrow, and if it's not fixed, move straight to civil citations, and they'll accrue until the ditch is fixed. Now, once the ditch is filled in, at that point...
Right, we're done with this particular...
They are in compliance with the notice of violation that we issued.
Right.
So.
But to me, somebody to willfully do what he did, he cut the silt fencing. He cut the, knocked the berm down. He knew what was going to happen. Somebody that reckless...
Well, there doesn't appear to be much that we can do at this point, other than if he doesn't fix the ditch after tomorrow, we start the meter run.
But we can start the process of removing his special use permit.
Yeah, we can start that notice and the process.
Okay. So is it, at this point, the majority of the board is okay with moving forward with daily fines until that ditch is fixed?
You can go there tomorrow and assess it.
Yes, we can have staff do that tomorrow to assess where the ditch has been, if that issue's been corrected yet.
Okay. And then we can start.
Ditch, silt fence, and pumping was actually in the incorrect location entirely, I believe.
Yeah, so the notice of violation addressed a couple of things. The pumping was in the wrong location, as well as the ditch. The silt fencing, while it's shown on the plan, the specifications of that fall under the jurisdiction of the state of North Carolina.
Okay.
Under DEQ, technically.
DEQ. Okay. All right. All right, Mr. Hall?
It's not just, it is not just those things, such as it says on the property. When I walked the property before construction started, that property was a little bit higher than ours. Now it is lower than ours. Also, there's supposed to be a swell of no less than 12 inches, but no more than three feet, that is also erected there. That is gone. When I asked Mr. Old about it, his word was, "Well, that's erosion. Until the grass grows, it just happens." I said, "But you have to maintain it per the UDO." And he just never responded to that, sitting. So it's not just one thing, it's multiple things to keep this from happening. The swell's gone, you know, he has to maintain it until he turns it over, according to UDO, until a homeowner's association takes it over or the homeowner. Well, until there's 75% of the house is built, he's responsible, and it isn't there because it's washed away. Or they graded it away because now some of that property's lower. That back corner where he had the pump going is where the farmer's field actually drained in. Commissioner Etheridge came out, and I know that the farmer's mad as hell. So we know that the corner now is lower. I mean, it never drained like that. And again, I don't know how much altering he has done to the property with his grading and everything else, but definitely the swell's gone. So it's not just one or two things. I'd have to say that the county's going to have to go out and inspect the whole thing based on what was there and based on what the engineers said could do, because it sounds like he's done more. And again, I don't want to take anybody's job from him. I don't want to make anybody, you know, go broke or anything, but he's affected us. We didn't, you know, we've enjoyed the fact, the noise, it happens. We understand it. Progress happens. We all knew this was there. And we haven't made one complaint. We've been very, they've been very respectful in the fact of the noise not starting too early or anything else, but it's part of it. If anything, it should increase the value of my property and my other neighbors with 10 acres, because there aren't many 10 acres lots left. But when you take and you look at it, and the old running joke was, I cost him $100,000 because now he had to comply with the stormwater progress for all three subdevelopments, had to be together. And this way, you couldn't, one couldn't do it and say, "Oh, it's his fault. It's his fault." The board sat there and said, "All three have to be in compliance and work together." And we haven't even got to the first one, so I don't know what he's altered and changed. Looking at it, it's lower over there. I think that dirt's gone this way, away from my property. And again, it wasn't just a holding pond, it was a lake out there.
Okay.
Well, when staff goes out there, I mean, you can look at all that and get a report.
So, there's two things going on here, just to clarify. The complaint that we received was specifically about the pumping location and this extra ditch, which we addressed.
And the silt fence.
And the silt fence, but the silt fence is not county jurisdiction, technically. We can look at it for a myriad of violations. It's the staff's, the staff has received direction from the board in the past, that, you know, we work on a complaint-only basis unless it's along the highway. Now, the board wants us to go in and do a full sweep of the site, we're happy to do that, but that will take more than a couple hours. We're probably going to have to get our engineer out there to shoot elevations and do some other things, but that's not a problem. I just want to make sure that I understand the direction from the board.
Just heard a citizen complaint about...
All that stuff.
Six or eight of them over there.
All right.
I'd say, let's just go ahead and do the full sweep, and let's just check it out and find out what violations are there.
Okay. So we, what we intend to do then is check the plans that they submitted, walk the property and see what's in violation, make a holistic list, a full list, and then issue that as a separate notice of violation.